Let's call the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order. Regular meeting Thursday, June 21st, 2018, 7:00 PM. Let's please. There's no pastor here, so let's just take a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Beadby.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Here.
Commissioner Kellman.
Here.
Commissioner Flossom.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is absent. Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City manager left. Here.
Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Lepley?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to Communications. I'm going to need a motion to receive and file the communication.
I'd like to make one change. I'd like to move the item C, Communications, to 9D. It's the Attorney Tifa Termination Plan Letter, so we can discuss, if possible.
Can I get, reconnect to a motion?
Yes. I'll make that a motion.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions or concerns on moving that communication down? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to Communications. Can I?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the communications for file.
Support.
Any questions on the communications? Hearing none? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Merkel. I'm doing the Eagle Scout project at the beach with the handicap swing. We've raised more than enough money with the community's help to switch from the single bay to a three-bay swing. We just need to get, we have all the measurements, everything will fit, but we do need the city to reapprove of it.
Mike, everything's good? Okay.
Um, what may I do? I'll make a motion that we approve the Eagle Scout project for the swing upgrade.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Yes.
No questions, but I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done to get this project going and to make it happen for the handicap people.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi. Oh, sorry.
We need to vote on, we've got a motion on the floor, but you can, you can stay right there. No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. It's all yours.
Hi, we just, my name is Mike Drogaj, this is my wife Diane. We just wanted to introduce ourselves. We have a small trucking company. We have four semis, and we have trailers. And currently, we're renting a building on Thompson, on the end of the road. And we bought a piece of property on Parker, and we're hoping to build on that eventually. So we've, we're going through the process of getting permits. We've talked, we met Mike, and several times we've bugged him, so we're trying to do the right thing. I have no idea if we're going to be in business long enough to do it, but we're trying, so. All right.
Anyone else like to speak?
Charles Signory, 224 North Elizabeth. I'd like to address the board on a couple different things. Since we're going to be discussing the Tifa later on in the evening, I want to touch on that a little bit. I still am scratching my head trying to figure it out why we're going to ask for a millage when we're giving up about $56,000 a year on this. I know some people think we didn't provide a plan. I also blame this board that you guys did not work with us and send your city manager or a representative to come and work with us, tell us exactly what you guys wanted. We're responsible for not, you know, providing what you needed. I'll take the blame for myself. I can't take it for the board. But I just think it's a tragedy that we're giving up $56,000 a year. That's the bottom line, than going to our residents and asking for a millage in times that are tough right now in this city, seems with the ferry, with, you know, people say, well, there isn't, you know, all the storefronts are full. They're not. Take a look down Parker, take a look down Broadway. Businesses are struggling in this town right now. So I ask that each one of you representatives of the commission, and Mr. Mayor, take a quick look at that. You guys can repeal this. It does not have to go. The state does not give out Tifas anymore, nor DDAs. You've got St. Clair right down the road that's dumping $35 million into a hotel, the owner there, and they've got a lot of support from their government, city government, state, just like we have here. That's going to be upcoming in the next couple of years, and I think that we need to stay focused on our city, on what we do, and back the businesses and residents. Another thing I want to get on, I had to get that plug in there because we're going to be talking about it tonight. One of the biggest budgets that you guys have, that you guys look into, and I think that Ms. Hendricks, with the fire authority, you guys are doing great. It's a model that you guys need to look at for our police department. In Genesee County, Moosey Township, and I believe it's Swart Creek, have a police authority, those two. They're doing very well with it. It's over a year old now. They've got two other cities that are going to come aboard with them. I've been looking at them, watching them for quite a while now. I haven't said anything, but it's something that we need to look into. I think it's a way that we could save money. I think our budget for that is around, somewhere around $600,000 a year, I think, for police total, with budgets, wages, cars, everything. If we could share that with our current fire authority towns around here, maybe that could save something. It's just, I'm trying to think out of the box, do something different, and continue to look at ways to better serve this community, that, what we're doing, you know. You guys are doing great. It's a volunteer, basically a volunteer job, what you guys do, and you take a lot of heat for it. I get it. All your boards are volunteer, they all, these people that are on planning and everything. And you're all doing a good job. Don't hear me say you're not. I just think we need to think out of the box and continue to work together on the, keep the things that we have and improve on it. Okay?
Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we add a closed session for the POM negotiations for item between 13 and 14.
Yeah, motion.
Support.
Yeah, if it was motion.
Motion support. Any questions on it? It came to us late, toward the, uh, late, Mr. Avery.
I think she sent an email out, but we, none of us have any information.
We don't have any information on it.
It's the police union negotiations.
Reopener, yeah.
You're asking for that closed session tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's awkward for people, some people.
Any other questions or concerns on the?
Yeah, I have the same concern. I haven't seen any yet.
All that it is, is a wage reopener. It's not a contract, it's just a wage reopener.
So you just want to give us information that we haven't seen yet?
It's just a number.
Okay. You're allowed to do that in closed session, open meetings, I.
And I'm only basing this on the email that we got from her. None of us have seen anything on it, so.
Any other questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Moving on to the.
No. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I thought that's what we just did.
No, we added.
Oh, added it, okay.
Now we have to approve.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carry. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have a special event permit for the maritime days. Oh, approve the city minutes, City Commission minutes, June 7th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the City Commission regular meeting of June 7th, 2018.
Any corrections or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now moving on to the consent agenda, with the special event permit for Marine City Maritime Days and a business license for the Twisted Kitchen.
Motion to approve it's submitted.
Have a motion to have support.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on it? Yes, Lisa.
Somebody here from the maritime day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Has anybody been in contact with you about the signs that you guys have put up?
Yes.
Okay. Are they going to be resolved? We have a lot of site issues.
Well, we were told that one had to be moved, and we moved that yesterday.
Okay, there's another one.
I said at least one. Oh, I see, I just heard one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was the one that I knew of, the M-29 in Chartier.
Yeah, it was.
And then there's another one.
On Fairbanks that's hooked to a county sign.
Is every relevant, like the curve?
Yeah. You can't put them in any of their poles, you can't put them in the right of ways. So I'd suggest if you could, just get with Elaine on all of them to make sure that you got them in the right place for that.
Okay.
And we, I had actually spoken with her about potentially bringing a map for where they plan on having sign locations for approval, because these are, the majority of them would probably be temporary off-site signage, so I don't know. I know there's one in our park, which anything that's in our parks requires approval. Anything in any public easements would require approval. I'm not sure if the majority of the board is favorable on it being in easements or not.
So how many are on the city things?
I'm not even sure how many signs there are.
Well, we placed, we placed 10 total. I'm trying to think where, but we moved one, we put it on CBS property, and then we put one on the bridge at the end of Brown Street, just one on 26 and King Road, and then the one by the curve, by the corner of Roshan. And then there's one by Old City Hall on Main Street, if you were coming into town.
There's one at the beach. You have one at the beach? At the beach?
Oh, yes, one at the beach, and then one at that, what park is, right at the edge as you're going into town.
Broadway Park.
Yeah, there's one right there, and then the one we put in Drakeburg.
Okay. And it's not your fault. I mean, we have this all the time, but we're trying to do things right, so I don't have a problem. Do you need a motion tonight for that? And then you can work with her on sign placement?
Well, I, I think what we can do is work with them, and if anyone from the commission still sees signs that are an issue, please let me know.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, because I know you guys do a lot of hard work, but we just want to keep you out of trouble.
Oh, yeah, that's.
For the signs and the stuff. And so you've got everything all scheduled and all ready to go?
Pretty much, it's real close.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
So the beer tent's moving down to the, to the old location?
Yes, like old days.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that would help.
No rib tasting this year?
Yes.
Is there?
Yeah, that's in there.
Okay, I'm in. All right. Okay. I was just looking.
So far, you've asked about beer and ribs.
Okay.
And the rib guys down there at the park, the past two years, they've dumped their coals in, in the rotary club flower bed, so.
Yes, we are, we are. We're taking care of that problem.
So everything worked out with the DPW? You're all good?
We have news meeting.
Excellent.
And ask you to please do.
Okay. Wonderful.
Excellent.
Great, great.
Can't wait.
Anybody else have any other questions? Roll call, both please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes.
Commissioner Kellman.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beadby.
Yes.
All these motions carried.
Moving on to unfinished business with Infrastructure Committee recommendations, the headly override millage resolution.
The I prepared to address this informs you that the Infrastructure Committee has been meeting numerous times and reviewing information received from DPW and the Treasurer regarding fund balances and projected future revenues for roads. The recommendation coming out of the Infrastructure Improvements Group is to consider one of two possible millage language for a headly override for the November election. One would be for 1.7778 mils. That would cost someone with the average home, it's about $50,000, about $45 a year. That would, in essence, cover milling and resurfacing a number of roads throughout the city, and that's it. The other option is for a millage of 3.2893. That would cost an average homeowner about, of a home value about $50,000, would cost about $82 a year. Both of these millages are only for a term of five years. The lower millage, as I mentioned, is just milling and repaving a number of roads, whereas the higher one would also include some projects that involve underground infrastructure on some of the roads, so that would include some water and sewer repairs along with the roads. The, the term would start in 2019 and go until 2023, I believe. So what we'd be looking for is to either select, to select one of these resolutions so that we can move forward with getting millage language on the ballot.
Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that City of Marine City adopt the millage for the maximum headly allowance so that we can do as much of the road and infrastructure work that we can.
So that would be the three.
The second option.
Second option.
Support.
Yes, Lisa.
Can you explain to everybody too that how the bond issues now will not impact their taxes, and it's a different issue?
Sure. So there are two bond issues that are within the five-year period, and those two bond issues are both for water sewer improvements, so those are actually on the water and sewer bill, so over the course of those five years, there, there may be some changes in the water and sewer bill, but it's not going to be a direct impact on the taxes for the property.
And just so everybody knows, this, this would be a resolution on the November ballot that the taxpayers can decide for themselves. I mean, but the issue is, we just, if we have to go with the small amount of money we have, it would take us 30, 35 years to try to get this done without going for this. Even with Tifa, there's no way we'd ever get it all done. And nobody likes to raise taxes, but it'll be up to the taxpayers?
Mr. Flossom.
Yeah, the committee looked at it and, for the, for the voters, this is just for streets and the infrastructure part of it. It will end in five years, and it's just for streets. It's like when we were talking about the Tifa, the Tifa district, you only could use it in a Tifa district, so we couldn't use it for streets in other districts. This, this is for all the streets in town. It doesn't matter what district, and it's just a millage for streets only.
There was a minor correction in my memo on that third paragraph. The first sentence that I, I mentioned that 3.2893 mils is for repaving and infrastructure. The second sentence, I say road paving only, that should have been road and infrastructure, just to correct that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Okay, sorry, one more thing. Are we going to have some informational meetings before November to make sure everybody understands this?
Yes.
In detail?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
If there's no more questions, we'll have a roll call, both then.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes.
Commissioner Kellman.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beadby.
No.
Commissioner Avery. Five days, motion carried.
Excellent. Moving on to Ordinance 2018-005, Water and Sewer Rates, Second Reading for this resolution.
Just a reminder that you had this before you for the first reading at the last meeting. The only change is the water usage is going from, I'm sorry, from $6.94 per thousand gallons to 7.09, and the sewer usage is going from $5.50 per thousand gallons to $5.62. That's the only change.
Can I get a motion?
I have a question first, in the procedure. Is this a motion to adopt this, or?
It's the second reading.
Okay, second, yeah, good, all right.
Second reading and adoption.
All right. I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2018-005.
Support.
The motion's support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call, both please.
Commissioner Kellman.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beadby.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
No.
Five days, motion carried.
All right, moving on to Ordinance 20, or 2018-002, Recreational Vehicles Amendment and Introduction.
So this is something that we brought back based upon feedback and discussion at the previous meeting. The things that we have changed is we removed the requirements for a permit for these recreational equipment to be in the driveway in the front yard. Also, just moved around a paragraph, let's see, paragraph E just got moved around so that the reference to D above was in the next paragraph instead of skipping a paragraph. One feedback that I, one item of feedback that I did get from the police chief is just letting everybody know that as it currently stands with this ordinance, if there is a, a issue with someone is in noncompliance, it would be considered a misdemeanor, and he thought that it might be more appropriate to have it be a civil infraction. So his recommendation was to add the language in there that a person that violates this section shall be responsible for a municipal civil infraction and shall be subject to the penalty provisions in 1099 of the code.
It's a good recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can have that ready for the second reading and adoption if this is approved this evening to move forward.
Yes, Lisa.
Okay, couple of questions because I noticed another issue. Okay. So parking them in the street, and trailers now have slides. I've already seen one where they crank the slide out. Luckily, it was on the inside, but you got to worry about that if somebody's going to park in the street for some time, and they're moving their slide out, that it could be out into the street. So that could cause you an issue. They don't always have to move them all the way out, but some of those slides go out 36 inches. So if you got to park in the street and you got that slide coming out, that's one. And then the other thing is, what about if you have apartment complexes and they park them in the parking lot?
Private property. Is that? Your private property, right?
Is that okay?
It's a private property issue.
So we don't care? Okay. All right, that's, that was the only thing, is the slide.
Mr. Avery.
Well, if they get their slide out, we could say they violated the with requirement. They don't have a wide load permit.
I think anybody.
Hit it. No, I guess we have to expect a little common sense, but then again.
Exactly.
We can work on some language for the second reading for that.
One more. I think in looking through this, I found that there is no requirement in there for a permit from the City Commission now. Okay, then on the first page, Section 153.56, in bold letters, parking or storage restrictions. Maybe we should cut off the part that says permit obtained from City Commission.
Yes, you are correct, thank you.
We just deleted the word permit. Good catch, Mr. Avery.
So much for being of pain.
Oh, that's very helpful, very helpful.
Spelling and storage.
Can we get a motion on this?
Well, again, are we going for a second reading as amended?
We'll have a second reading as, with these changes at the next meeting.
Okay, so we're going for first reading with these changes?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we adopt the first reading as amended in preparation to seeing the second reading.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, roll call, both please.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beadby.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
No.
Commissioner Kellman.
Yes.
Five days, motion carried.
All right. Moving on to the City Attorney's Letter to Tifa.
We prepared and issued a letter to Tifa dated May 31st, 2018. Without you focusing yet on that letter, we, we as a commission, you as a commission, sought out a series of opinion letters on Tifa over a time period, and we issued lengthy opinions, starting with what is it, how does it work, how are we doing, how is ours? And at some juncture, we voted to bring Tifa to a close effective December 15th of 2018, and we. And we set forth a series of seven meeting steps as to how we would progress through that process, and you voted to approve those seven processes. Along the way, we suspended the processes in favor of giving what I think ended up being almost seven or eight months of time for the Tifa board to study and get back to the commission with evidence or justification to maintain Tifa in one respect or another, maybe in part or in full. I have to disagree with public comment that there was no presentation to the Tifa board on what was expected, because I made that presentation. So I'm, I just want to let you know that I attended a meeting of a subcommittee of Tifa and explained to them the type of evidence and the type of documentation that the law would require you to present. And I also had direct communication with the Tifa engaged attorney and explained to the attorney, who I know very well, and affirmed the type of evidence that the commission would entertain if it was there to support a continuation or extension of Tifa. So, I mean, I think that that was communicated pretty clearly. The, the process that we set forth involved a lot of our accounting work in the office, and we made it through a series where how much money does Tifa have? What are the current bills of Tifa? How much money is owed to Tifa? How much money comes into Tifa? How much money? And we balanced all that out, and we made presentations over time to you from the department. The next step then was to, as we head towards December, was to have a listing of what are the expenses now, so we all know what will Tifa be spending between now and its termination. We already determined that there was this much money and this much in fixed costs, so we knew we could stop the taxing because we had ample money to handle the obligations that Tifa had undertaken. So one of the obligations in this, in this procedure was that the authority, the Tifa, was to analyze and make a presentation to you about meeting the fixed and financial obligations and making sure they're satisfied by December fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. In my letter, which you have in front of you dated May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, I recited this history, and then I worked with city management and city treasury, treasurer representatives, and we came up with the payments that still have to be made out of Tifa, and they're in this letter. And they're listed, and they're detailed in terms of their amounts. And so this was communicated to Tifa and with the, please review the listed expenditures and let me know immediately if there are any concerns. And in my opinion, these are the obligations that Tifa still needs to pay out of the Tifa money to have an effective termination by December of this year. And if there are any questions with respect to those listings, I think there are six of them, we have everyone here who could probably answer those questions. But those are, and I'm, and, you know, I want to make sure I'm being clear, those are the expenditures that are authorized going forwards to the exclusion of all others. We can't, we can't undo all of our accounting and throw off all the numbers that have been presented to you. These numbers arise out of meetings three, four, five. You know, we're now heading towards six and seven, so that was the point of this letter. Be happy to answer any questions.
At the Tifa meeting this week, there was actually a correction on this. The exterior, exterior commercial enhancement grants are actually just thousand-dollar grants, so that's ten grants of a thousand dollars totaling ten thousand dollars.
Instead of twenty.
Correct. And one of the other things that came out of the Tifa meeting was that the chair, Craig May, was going to contact Bob Davis in regards to this. They felt that the fixed obligations did not include any of the current obligations, and there was some discussion about what has been budgeted for this fiscal year and the next fiscal year still as allowable expenses. I'm not sure if he contacted you yet.
No.
Put under the plan, none of those items are in the current plans, correct? I mean, we can only process basically what's, within our plans unless we update all the plan.
I agree. What we tried to do is, you know, we tried to do this over time and tried to do it systematically. And when you finish that system, these are the only items left of Tifa financial obligations through the end of the year. I don't think we can be in a position, given all the work that has gone into establishing these figures, to just allow new expenses to be incurred or to take on obligations. Otherwise, all that work that was done in these first five meetings is going to become rather moot. We have to stick, you voted on a seven-point plan, and we need to see it through. It's my opinion, these are the expenditures left between now and December to the exclusion of all other expenditures. Otherwise, the work that you've had everyone do, the numbers are just going to keep changing from what's been presented to you and approved.
So what happens if the Tifa board continues to approve additions even though we have this plan?
Well, I think that.
It says they can.
I think the commission needs to take action to lock in these payments to the exclusion of all others.
Which I thought we did that at our.
I think you did too, but.
Our last meeting.
There seems to be some dispute.
So obligations, you're tackling legal contracts of some type, agreements?
Things that were, where we've, where they committed, where they committed to make these payments.
Because we have extra money budgeted for things like administrative fees and other things. What happens to that?
We're not distributing them. They're not going to be submitted.
Okay.
And I am not capturing any Tifa funds from the two thousand eighteen tax year, so there will be no money going into that fund.
But it's budgeted.
But a budget is just simply a plan. It doesn't mean that you have to do what's in that.
And I think that's part of the issue with Tifa is the fact that city commission had budgeted money.
These are the only things you're going to take money out for from Tifa.
That was, that was the plan, because the Tifa faucet stopped.
Okay.
The taxing plan, we stopped. After we determined we were here on money with expenditures here, so we stopped putting money in, but we can't allow this to happen.
I understand.
Yeah, so this, yeah, so the answer to your question is yes. Those expenditures keep us right where you got a snapshot, and those should be paid.
We'll make a budget amendment of some type since you're not going to use Tifa money to pay administrative fees.
We will not need a budget amendment. The only way you would need a budget amendment is if you were, okay, the revenue side of the tax is actually going to have more coming into it than what was budgeted, because you are no longer sending that money over to Tifa. And when I did the budget, I calculated the tax, current tax collections with those funds going over there. So the administrative fees that are also in there listed as a revenue will not affect that at all. In fact, you'll actually see an increase in revenue than what was in the original budget.
Yes.
I have one other thing to mention, and that is for the funding for the business startup grants and the exterior commercial enhancement grants. I don't believe that last year we actually gave the maximum amount. So in essence, without knowing whether or not we're going to expend that full amount, I think at this point in time, it might be difficult to do that final calculation because we don't necessarily know if we're going to spend all that money or not. I don't know how that plays into figuring out.
But we've authorized the max.
Right.
Right.
But when it comes down to calculating it at the end, you're going to look at the fund balance.
Right.
You're going to look at what's in there in cash, and if all of that has not been expended, that's extra. So if I do a calculation now, it's going to be a moot point.
It'll be, it'll be a little, it'll be, right, I get, right.
So it's, so Elaine and I discussed this, and what in the calculation will be done is actually after the termination of land in December, because then we'll know clearly what is in there. And we'll do that calculation at that time, and then the funds will be dispersed.
Because the business startup grants, we don't know how many new businesses we'll have, how many people we'll put in for it. So if we don't have ten people that put in for the two thousand, say we only have five, then that's only ten thousand, and there's still ten thousand, so we don't necessarily know the bottom end of that number either.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
My letter set forth the maximum exposure, so I do, I do understand the accounting.
Okay, this is just a question for understanding. I believe that the Tifa board cannot really write a contract to spend money without the commission voting for it. So therefore, there shouldn't be any additional expenses on here, because obviously, we can't vote for it. We can't approve something that we said we weren't going to. And I'm saying that from somebody who voted not to kill this, but, okay, so I think it's a moot point, and what we have here is what you'd call the worst case.
Full exposure.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
And you're correct.
One, one of the items that they currently have had before them was the Friends of the Library coming and asking for an electronic sign for the city-owned Marine City Library branch. And that amounted to, I think it was about twenty-five thousand or something like that. And that's not something that would be a contracted expenditure. I'm not sure if it's in the development plan or not. I think there is still a line item for miscellaneous or capital improvements or something, and that would potentially fall within their budget threshold for the year. And that was really one of the things that kind of pushed this to the surface, was that request.
Yes, please.
I understand they want the sign, but I'd still make a suggestion, you take the current sign we have that we don't really use and give it to the library, and that would solve the issue of having anybody to have to pay twenty-five thousand dollars for another sign. There's nothing wrong with that sign at the DPW. All we put on there is addresses. It's not really of any use. Myself, I think the library could use that sign more than we're using it.
I'm not real clear on the budget threshold, what they can and cannot spend. I guess if you could elaborate on that a little bit.
It's based on the information on the last page there details the expenditure.
Right.
In fact, I met with two of the members of the Friends of the Library, because they wanted to talk to me about that sign. And based on the attorney's letter and the process, and then you voting in April to proceed forward with the original process of the attorney, I told them that it is not an allowed expense, and it cannot be submitted before the commission. So the only expenditures, Jim, are listed on that last page there.
Yeah.
And the page before, there's one line on the page before.
So what is their budget threshold? The thirty-five nine? What is, what's that number?
Well, we'd have to add all that up, whatever that is.
These, you're saying these obligations, and that's the threshold.
In the last sentence on the previous page, too.
But there's, but their actual next six months of budget is a lot more than this.
Well, it's a twelve-month budget, but.
Yeah.
Again.
But we're, but we're going to stop it in six months based on the vote that I voted against, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what happens during that next six-month period?
Anything we're going to pay is.
Outside of this? Nothing?
That's what we're looking for clarity.
You're saying they can't spend anything except what they have obligated here?
Correct.
But you budgeted money for it.
Well, they, they prepared their budget.
And we approved it.
Correct. But again, it's just a plan. And, and the thing was, is you got to remember when we.
As I said, I'm confused.
Well, we start doing the budget in the end of December, first part of January.
Yeah.
Okay, at that point, when they were preparing their budget.
Yeah.
They could do it, because there wasn't this vote in April at a city commission meeting that suspended their expenditures except for these.
We didn't vote.
So they could prepare the budget as presented. Again, it's just a plan.
And during budget workshop, you said you did not want to go back to them and ask them to revise their submitted budget.
Well, I, the thing was, is that if we did, it would have caused problems to approve the budget in the timely manner that we're supposed to approve it.
Okay.
Let me, let me shed some more light, because I think you're asking a good question. Remember, we, we took a vote and did a little bit of a suspension of the program?
Mm-hmm.
Had we not, had we followed the seven items in the sequence that I had suggested, that budget process never would have, would have matured the way it did. We were on that break that we voted on to just, let's just stop the process and let everyone think and try to make presentations. We took an eight-month vote. Then we came back, and it was just in April that you voted, that's it, all right? We haven't heard enough in a presentation to convince us, after eight months of allowing for research and presentations. We didn't hear enough. So, but by April, you're right, the budget had already.
Been approved.
Right. And that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't taken that big break.
No, I fully understand.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I understand the whole progression of how things took place. I guess I'm not clear on is each month when they meet, all they can do is pay these bills. Is that what you're saying?
That.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And part of the reason that the attorney did this letter was because I talked to Elaine, and I needed clear clarification, and I felt the board needed to understand what the clear clarification was, is that I do not capture any new money and exactly what can be submitted to the board for approval. So that's, and the information that's in there for the expenditures was actually from the report that I prepared in May of two thousand seventeen, which was part of the chain of, that we were supposed to do during all this.
Okay. So we approved the budget they submitted, but now we're basically saying, yeah, but that doesn't really matter, because right before, we decided you can't spend any money. I guess that's the part I'm not clear on, so.
When we, when we voted in April, we, we, we made it clear that only the, only, only those fixed items.
So why should they even bother getting together each one? Then all they're doing is paying these particular bills, that's the only reason they're meeting?
That's correct, but they do need to meet to pay those bills. And we do receive a monthly bill from the grant writer.
What happens if they don't?
Well, your bottom line is, you're the final say-so in the matter, and it is a contractual agreement with the grant writer that we are obligated to submit that. The same with the bond payment. That is an obligation that we have to meet.
And these business startup grants, they still need to be.
Yeah, if someone submits something in there, yeah.
Processed. The exterior commercial enhancement grants still need to be processed, and hopefully we can max these out.
Yeah, they have criteria for those in the application.
All right, thanks for answering my questions.
I think it might help to clarify a wording here. We didn't really take an eight-month break in the schedule. We compressed the schedule because the end is the same as it always was.
Correct.
So that's how we overran that spot where the budget got ahead of us. But we don't have to spend all the budget. Fortunately, we don't every year on things. And one last question.
And one last question. Since this will be closed, the TIFA will be closed on December 15th, the board should have no power to do anything, because there is no TIFA.
Well, until December 15th.
After, yes, after December 15th.
So, right. Nothing can happen after that. We could certainly not have any more liabilities.
One of the concerns I heard was about the library asking for that, and they can't get it. I know for a fact that the library is in negotiations with the city, right? Talking to you about that sign to move it, and they would pay for moving it over to City Hall if we're not using it, and it's better, it's better to be used somewhere else. That's also our building, the library. And they're willing-
I have not directly spoken to anyone about that. It is an idea that I've heard kind of floated around, and I think that someone's been talking to Friends of the City, or I'm sorry, Friends of the Library about that option.
They've got a committee to see you.
I'm sorry?
They've got a committee to see you. So I don't know if they've seen you yet or not, but-
Nope, nobody met with me, no. I know that they had talked to Mary Ellen, because there was this overlying issue about whether that was an allowable expenditure or not.
What I'm saying is, if we did agree to that, that they could have that sign, and they would pay to move it, that TIFA is a new issue over the sign.
And that's, that's a totally different agenda item that could be discussed at a later time.
Yeah, another topic, you need to stay on this topic. Signing will need to be brought for us, so, right now, it hasn't.
So what do you need from us tonight? Anything? Or are we just following this?
Well-
It's just communication?
Yeah, it's just, it just-
To be accepted.
To explain, I think we moved it out to explain and answer these questions.
Any more questions?
Hearing none, moving on to New Business Emergency Response Committee.
A number of years ago, I think maybe three or four years ago, back when Don Tilley was here, he was working with the previous city manager and a group of people on preparing an emergency response manual. This was something that was done in connection with Homeland Security. They had been, I think, preparing a manual that was something that was going to be templated by a lot of other communities. Since Don left, the ball had kind of been dropped on this process, and Homeland Security was working on preparing a new updated manual. I don't think that that's ever been accomplished to this point. So with this opportunity for the Black Sky Simulation Workshop, I thought this might be a good opportunity to kind of springboard this and try and get it going locally. Last year, we did have the incident with the power outage, and we did wind up doing an emergency shelter, which we used the manual that we had a little bit. We did find some really local shortcomings and ways to address that, and things that we'd like to get from a local perspective into a manual. One of the ideas that I had talked about a while ago was when we form a committee, having at least a board member, someone from fire, police, DPW, and myself, any other representatives that you think might be good to be on a committee. So the Black Sky Simulation Workshop is July 24th. This is something done through Homeland Security that we would need to pre-register for, and I'm just wondering if this would be a point where anybody is willing to make a motion to form a committee and move forward with this project?
I make a motion to form our emergency response committee and move forward with this project.
Support.
You volunteer to head it up?
Done it before.
Is that something that you would be willing to be the support?
Yep. Yeah.
Any questions on it? Can you work on getting a representative from police and-
I will work to gather the rest of the committee and send out notice.
Are you going to go to the treaty?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. That's what I was just asking, if she was going to do the other parts of it before we voted on. Any other questions on forming this committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. All right, moving on to Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension.
This is something for the use of AT&amp;T to use the right-of-way for their telecommunications. This is actually a state-regulated agreement. They're looking to do a five-year extension. It doesn't look like any change of terms or anything, so just looking for a approval on this contract extension.
Mr. Mayor.
Do we pay? I'm sorry, do they pay anything for this? Good.
Yes, they do.
Okay. I don't get a five-year contract from AT&amp;T for anything I have. They just raised it?
We receive funds every year that are telecommunications right-of-way funds. It's in the budget, and it's right under the revenue count called telecommunications right-of-way. And I believe it's like around $20,000 a year annually. Now, I'm not saying it's coming specifically from AT&amp;T, it's just-
It was just the way it was presented, that we had to approve it because they said so.
Far from the truth.
Well, that's the way it is, yes.
Can I get a motion on this, or if any, just so we can move on? I'll make a motion that we extend there for five years.
Support.
Any other questions on it?
Let me ask a question. What happens if we didn't?
Probably the state would be sending us a letter and trying to mediate.
And we'd lose money, yeah. We'd probably lose money.
Any other questions on it?
You'd lose money if you voted by.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Moving on to the 2018 Tax Rate Request.
This is the city operating millage. The authorized by the charter is 20 mils, but with the headly rollback, it goes from 20 mils to 16.7107. That's the maximum we can levy without a headly override. So I just need you to approve the millage, so I can send out the tax bills in about a week, a little over a week.
So if we don't approve it, we can't send the bills out?
Well, I can still send them out, but the problem is, is we won't have any revenue coming in.
All right. Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve this item.
Support.
Yes, the tax rate request.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Attorney. Mayor Bean.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Klaassen.
Yes.
All ayes. All ayes.
All right, moving on to Resolution 2018-020.
This is for the delinquent accounts that would go on the 2018 summer tax. And if you look at page three of it, it will detail what I am requesting to place on there. And what's happened is, is that billings have been sent. Each of these property owners also have been notified, if they do not pay, that it will be added to their 2018 summer tax bill. There's property cleanup invoices and the amount of $775. The water sewer construction special assessment. There's really, I think, only six more people that still owe money on that. I mean, this is the project that'll be ending in a few years. Three of them came in and submitted payment, three did not. So they're going on the tax bill. And the last item is our delinquent water sewer account, and I would like to say that Michelle has done a very good job in trying to collect the delinquent accounts, because in all my years, I have never had just one go on the tax roll. So it is working the system that has been set up in the water and sewer department as far as the collection procedure. So I think that's very good, and if you look at the amount, even the amount is very small. So I just need your approval to allow me to put these on the 2018 summer tax.
Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve the special assessment for delinquent accounts.
Support.
Motion's supported. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Ewery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
All ayes. Motion's carried.
Moving on to Resolution 2018-21, the Budget Amendment.
Okay. If you will go to page seven, the first six pages is the office memo and the actual resolution. We'll go through the explanation sheets. Okay, the first items are your general fund revenue, and this was additional revenue not anticipated during the budget process, and this is part of that use tax distribution, PA 86. And this is the revenue that we receive for the loss of personal property tax monies once they restructured, how we collect those personal property. They make up the difference, the state does, and sends that funds to you. So it was higher than what we had budgeted. The delinquent personal property tax is higher, and that's because I've been working, if you've read in my activity reports, I've been working with the city attorney on trying to collect as much as I can in delinquent personal property tax, and that's been going very well enough. Of course, that shows the additional revenue there. The same reason would be for the penalty and interest tax, because there's penalty and interest part of that. The next item is your health and fitness, and that's because of that ABC gymnastics program. It's been a very good program in the recreation department. There's a lot of participation in this, and when we did the budget, that was the first time we had offered this program, and Lynn really didn't know what to expect out of it, so she didn't want to have high expectations, and actually, it's done very well. The other, next item is our recreation trips. Unfortunately, that was a program that didn't go as well. That would be for that Tiger baseball game. That's the revenue coming in there, and the only reason I said that there is because the offsetting expense, you know, set off the offsetting expense. The last item is the additional revenue for interest that we've received, which I have talked to the bank and had renegotiated our earnings credit, as well as working out so we could receive interest instead of having service charges for the monthly fees. Next item is the donations for the park benches. Again, we never know from year to year, so we don't really budget money there. It's just a kind of a formality to offset the expense in the parks department. And then the last revenue was that loan proceeds from the hotel project, and if you remember, that went over several years, so we weren't really sure what was coming in and what was going out during that time period. Now, we'll go down to the expenditures. Under your city commission budget, the increase is due to the new chairs that were purchased from the additional fund balance that we had, the surplus. The next item under the city manager is, is that we were trying to update a lot of everybody's Microsoft Office, so the city manager was increased for that expenditure. Under mine department, the Treasury Finance Department, office supplies were up. I had to increase it about $100. And the only reason some of this stuff is so minor, and it seems like it's minor, is because a lot of the budgets are very tight, like mine in particular. So it's like, I don't want to have the problem where I would exceed the maximum I can for that department, so I was trying to take care of that. In the police department, it was the equipment lease, the copier lease was not included. In fact, they did not even have the lease agreement when the budget was prepared. Under inspections, there is the property cleanup. That was using full-time personnel to do that, and we only budgeted $100, and there was like $300 that we're estimating. And then the travel expense, which is the mileage, had to be increased due to the fact that the city car she did not receive until April. And the reason we didn't use the vehicle maintenance portion of it is, is because there's work that needs to be done on that car. Mike met already with someone about that, and we already know that there's going to be at least $800, and that's not even fixed engine conditioning. So there was budgeted 2,000 in there for vehicle maintenance, and she's going to not use it all, but she's going to need it, that we're trying to use it up before year-end. Street lighting, again, that changes so much. It's hard for me when I do budget, because one year it seems higher, and then the next year it goes down, you know, it's like, you know, and I try to do my best coming up with that. Then under recreation, the offsetting expense for the health and fitness is the additional revenue from, you know, it's being covered by the additional revenue from the ABC gymnastics, and the same with the recreation trips. Then if you turn the page, the offsetting entry for the revenue was the expenses. Now, you will see it's higher, but that's because we still had funds from the year before that were still in the budget that were carried over. So it wasn't like we were getting the loan money, we were still using the funds that we hadn't received bills from to cover that. So if you look at the, go down and look at the net of revenue expenditures, in the original budget, there was $12,255 surplus. With all these changes, there's an increase of $1,0835. So actually, we've improved what we were going to do to $14,090. And I know you know from experience that generally, it's going to be higher than that, you know, but I just, I don't want to physically go through and change every account here. I just do the highlight ones, and I mainly try to just cover the expenditures that I'm a little concerned about by the department that may go over, so our department doesn't go over, because you are not, you're not allowed, well, it's not that you're not allowed, but the state would prefer that you stay within your budget, you know, and if not, then you've got to kind of explain to them why you've gone over, so. Next, on page eight, is the major street fund. The revenue is our gas and weight tax, and I don't know if everybody knew, but you know, they did increase those revenues in the gas and weight tax, so that's the, but we didn't know about it when we were preparing the budget, because we do it till far in advance. And then because it resulted in additional revenue, that means that local street receives additional revenue. So that's what the expenditure is, is transferring that 25% of gas and weight tax to local street fund. And page nine is the local street fund, and the revenue increase would be the gas and weight tax again. And then the Public Act 84 funds, which was again, something that was voted on at the state level, that we received additional funding for the street improvements. And then equipment lease, I know everybody asks me this every year, and this actually is the equipment that they use to work in the roads. The equipment was purchased from the general fund, which most, a lot of it is. They pay, based on the rates set up by the state of Michigan, a rental fee to use that equipment to perform work in the street fund. So if you go down to net of revenues over expenditures, and I'm sorry, I forgot to cover that in this major street, we actually increased in major street 52,000 because of that additional revenue than what we had anticipated. And in the local street, it's increased about 50,000, so we went from a deficit of 38,000 to a surplus of about 12,000. Next, on page 10, is the water and sewer fund, and the revenue listed here is the stall grant revenue, and this was monies that, again, it was, it went over a couple fiscal years, so we were estimating what we would be receiving and spending during those two years, and this is the additional revenue that we received. And then the offsetting- And then the offsetting expense would be the, in the next item under the system maintenance, for that, again, it's higher. But that's because we had money carried over from revenue that we had received before we actually received the expenses. Then wastewater treatment plant is the lab supply. There's additional expenses there that we did not anticipate during the budget process. And I believe that there's been increases from our vendors. And that's resulted in this increase here. The hospitalization insurance is here. And that's because there are several employees that opt out of doing our healthcare. So they get a stipend. And so this is the additional expense there for the stipend in the water fund. And possibly, when I was doing the budget, I just failed to include that when I was doing it because that stipend is spread out between the general, all the funds, just like a DPW employee's wage is split, this is split there. And then contribution to other funds is going to the special assessment fund to offset their, because they collect in special assessment fund to pay the bonds revenue. And whatever revenue that they're short, water and sewer fund has to contribute to that. And then the last item is on this, not the last item, but underwater plan is water monitoring services. And Mike's been using these funds. There is quite a bit of funds in there that's on the water and sewer bill that we've been collecting over the years. And it's just been in this fiscal year that Mike is actually accessing those funds and doing some of those improvements for water monitoring. And the last item is the additional expense for North Mary Sewer of $47,000. And then the North Elizabeth Sewer of $10,000. So $57,000 was increased there under the wastewater treatment plan. So if you go down to revenues over expenditures, we estimated a $17,380 deficit. When we did the budget, there's an increase of $32,245 in revenue. So it actually lowered the deficit to $14,135. Page 11 is the special assessment fund. The info fund transfer is the additional revenue from the water and sewer fund. And then this unfortunately is one account that I can't offset with an earnings credit. It has to be a separate account. Again, this fund will go away in a couple of years because the farmer's home bond will pay it off. So then we won't have to deal with all this anymore. And it just, it does not have any revenues, it's these expenditures. It's just supposed to take in, it needs enough money to meet its obligations. Any questions?
So we have a motion? Did we do a motion? Did we, we didn't?
No, I just started right into the explanation.
All right, so I'll need a motion.
I've got one question.
Yes.
On the water monitoring, have we heard anything from the state yet? Because I know they're looking at it.
I'll have an update for you during the report.
Okay. Thank you.
So can we get a motion? Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we accept.
Get your approval.
Okay, that we approve the fund transfer.
No, question.
Okay, that's why I, excuse me. Make a motion that we approve Resolution 021-2018.
Support. Motion support, any other questions on it? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossing.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beane.
Yes.
All aides motion carried.
All right, now moving on to Resolution 2018-22-22, fund transfer for the water sewer fund.
Yes, this is what I just explained about the special assessment fund. This is the actual transfer, to transfer from water and sewer to special assessment fund to cover the deficit, the estimated deficit.
Mr. Flossing.
Make a motion to approve the Resolution 022 of 2018, the fund transfer.
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossing.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beane.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
All aides motion carried.
Moving on to dispersments, including payroll, for a total of $449,047.57. Can I get a motion? Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve the dispersments, including payroll, of $449,047.57.
Support. Motion support, any questions on it?
I notice we're still paying bills for 300 Broadway utilities?
Just electricity.
Yeah. We had contracts, should have been done and moved and revoked the contracts. But I saw that in there, and I saw there was another TIPA in there. So I'm a big no on that one. That's all.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossing.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Beane.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
No.
All aides motion carried.
Moving on to preliminary financial reports. I need a motion to receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file about preliminary financial statements.
Support. Motion support, any questions on the financial statements? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. City managers' report.
I have attended the TIPA fire authority meetings. And also today, I attended the SEMCOG water monitoring meeting. Discussed at that meeting was the grant that SEMCOG is working on for the river communities that do the water testing. It's about a $350,000 grant. And what it looks like we would get in the city is about $17,000 worth of equipment. They're also looking to figure out installation and long-term maintenance fees, if that's something that a portion of the money can be utilized for that. So we should have some numbers hopefully by middle of July. And a contract that would be before city commission for approval. That's something that they need to move fast on because September 30th, all the money must be expended or the state will no longer provide the funding for that. I've been dealing with a lot of inquiries from residents and issues, things going on in the community. There may be some things that will materialize at future agendas. The vacant Brew Street property will be part of the public auction the St. Clair County's doing. We are going to list the minimum bid as $11,500, which will recoup our costs and losses that we have had. The current SEB is $17,500. So hopefully, we'll be somewhere in between those two, if not more. That will be August 11th. I will be contacting some of the neighboring properties because I know that I did receive a call in the past about someone that was interested. So I'll let them know that it will be going to the county auction. I believe that they put signs up on the property as well for that process. And we will have a link on our website to it as well. Tax bills are going to be going out very soon, as Mary Ellen mentioned, July 2nd. So be on the lookout for those, sorry. We unfortunately have had some more vandalism at the parks. Once again, the pavilion restrooms, people flushing just wads of toilet paper and making a mess of the pavilion restrooms. They've also been cutting up the seat belts for the swings at the tot lot. And I think we've also experienced some of that at another, one of the other playgrounds. I don't even know what to say about the continuous destruction of property. It makes it very difficult for us as a city to expend money on anything when it's potential that it may just get destroyed. So just to let you know, we did have the restroom shut down while we were doing those repairs. And we are looking to do repairs in the swings. Anybody sees something, please be vigilant and contact the police immediately. That's pretty much all I have for now. We are going to post something on Facebook to let people know about that as well.
She already did.
She already did, okay.
Yeah, and she's gotten a lot of people making comments about it that they're very upset about it, that this is happening.
That's it for my report?
Questions for the city manager? Sign for the library, you look into it for me?
If someone wants to reach out to me, that'd be great.
I know they got a committee, I thought they had already contacted you.
No, no, I think they just stopped in the office when I was out and talked to Mary Ellen about the issue with TIPA and then submitting with that.
One for you. I've had several complaints from some of the residents on Degercy. There's a no trucks posted sign, but a lot of the big semis are continually coming through. I know we have it posted for trucks route the other way. They're not talking about the ones going to the factories. They're talking the ones that continue on. The sign is kind of small, it's right by the bike path. So by the time they get there, it's a day late and a dollar short to try to turn it big. But we're talking tankers and car haulers. And they asked me to give this to you to see if there's anything that can be looked at or done.
I've talked to department heads a little bit about that. I have a suspicion that maybe some people, they come in to do the business and don't realize that once they start heading south out of town after they've done their business with whomever it is on Degercy, that they get to a point where there's no other place to turn around. One of my ideas or recommendations was to potentially put a sign that no through trucks. So we're working on doing something there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any more questions for the city manager? Move on to, hearing none, we'll move on to commissioner privilege. Mr. Avery. Mr. Eric's out.
Last meeting, we had a reading on the zoning code changes. But since it was just, I'm sorry, not a reading, we just accepted and filed. So I thought I would just mention that there are some strange things in there. One, sign alteration. The repainting or reposting of original display matter shall be deemed an alteration. So that means you cannot maintain your own sign, not altering it, just maintaining it. There's a bunch of things like that. But there's another one, vehicles used as signs. Any sign on a motor vehicle or trailer which is parked in front of or at a business in such a manner that it is visible from a public street or from a residential zoning district. We know we don't like some of the signs that we see carried around. However, would this tread on First Amendment rights? And there's more. I really think that rather than just pull out some boilerplate from somewhere else, we ought to look at this before it's approved. The lighting and signs. I couldn't vote on it the way it is. Sorry, I couldn't vote approval on it. Thank you, that's enough.
Mr. Flossing.
Nothing, everybody just have a good holiday that's coming up and be careful.
No, nothing else. Yeah, nothing else, thank you.
To piggyback on Commissioner Avery, I think I asked you, because we talked about putting that packet in this, for this meeting. And there was a reason why you didn't yet, because...
The planners on vacation this week. So, or last week, I think. And we haven't been able to assemble it. Talking about the signs, you know, I know it's a really big packet of information. And maybe what we can do is in essence, split it up and bring it to commission in maybe a couple of sections?
The other thing is, the Old News Boys is going to have Santa Fest coming up. Don't miss it. It's going to be Saturday, July 28th. It's going to be out at the Marine City Banquet Center. The morning, we're going to have from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Stuff for the kids to do, and everything for the kids is free. Then at night, we're going to have Santa supper party from 5:00 to 11:00. Tickets are going to be $35 per person or 40 at the door. And that includes picnic dinner, open bar and entertainment. Plus, we're going to have all sorts of other stuff. And this goes towards the Old News Boys. So if you're looking for any tickets, just get ahold of any Old News Boys or contact me, I'm on there also. And we can get you tickets for this event. It's going to be a good one. Also, the Lions, their wagon of cheer is out again this year. We'll be selling tickets from now to August 6th. They'll have a booth up at the festival. So that's another one that I know everybody appreciates, that big wagon. And the last one is, yeah, everybody, for the 4th of July, I know everybody gets into the fireworks issue. But I'd recommend that y'all read the city ordinance as much as possible and try to follow that. I know you can do it the day of, before and after. But please have consideration for your neighbors and their pets. And try to keep it to a bare minimum. I know last year, it was like World War III around here. So just be a little bit more neighborly. That's it.
Nothing. Yeah, I would love to hear a little less of the fireworks. I mean, we were very, it was fairly safe. We didn't have too many calls, we had a few. But hopefully, we don't have a repeat of how many went off last year. Everyone needs to have a good time. But that's about it. I don't have anything else. We are considering going into closed session. Before I read this, let's, can I get a motion to enter into closed session for reopening of the POEM negotiator?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the POEM negotiations information.
Support. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Flossing.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner. Sorry, can you speak up?
No.
Mayor Beane.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
All aides, motion carried.
The city commission will enter into closed session to discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement with the employees represented by POEM. There may or may not be any action taken upon returning to open session.